Final report. Good evening, Mayarai Padi, the council, and it's pleased to be here before you to share the results of the year-long study with New Venture Advisors. And I wanted to start just by thanking some of our stakeholders who are here this evening and who share in the credit for the good work done under this contract. Some of these folks contributed, first contributed to the project four years ago, and we're so grateful for their continued involvement. Maria Ontivera is from Ricardo, I'm glad you'll be here because it's her son's birthday party tonight, so. Dave Harrell from Visit Web Cities is here, Anne Fredericks from Western Illinois Small Business Administration Office. Lucy Carter from the Great House Farmers, she is also here, and Samantha Wright from Palmaras Social Justice Center, may still be here, so we are super grateful for their.
They did.
They did. So I wanted to just give you a short version of how we got here. In this presentation, including Andrea's, you'll see the evolution of a project. We started out almost five years ago believing that the entry to our city is important. And that the development of this area will make a statement about the type of community that Moline is. We believe the Spiegel Building was unique and important since seventy-eight thousand cars drive by it every day. And for that reason, we were attracted to the possibility of building, and that was our starting point. After the Urban Land Institute finished its advisory report in the summer of twenty-twenty-one, we began further evaluation of Spiegel redevelopment. In September of twenty-one, we held a series of public input sessions on the findings of the advisory report on Moline and found that there was plenty of interest in the concept. So in twenty-twenty-one, in early twenty-two, the Renew Moline hired PGAV planners with project funds, knowing that PGAV knew Moline well. PGAV laid the groundwork for this project, investigated demographics, and the market for what we were then calling a food hall. The findings of this study were useful and are summarized here on the slide. Stagnant population growth in Rock Island continues, except among immigrants, and that population has grown, as we know, by more than twenty-two percent from twenty-ten. There's clearly a need for a shared commercial kitchen, there's a market for prepared food in the region, and an opportunity to create or expand small food business and encourage food-based entrepreneurship. At the time, we were also examining public affordable artist lots with production space. And then, as I said, we did a lot of community engagement at that time, and the rooftop restaurant and bar was an idea that had a real attraction. So PGAV's market assessment showed that a public market having eight or nine food vendors could attract a significant number of visitors annually. PGAV evaluated a regional radius of about fifty miles and found that even two hundred and twenty thousand folks might visit annually. We also looked at other public markets and cities with dimensions of similar size. And without going into any more detail on that, what I learned through this process is that each public market features elements that are important to the community that it's in, and so there's no such thing really as a standard or cutty-cutter public market. We did look a little closer at the Rockford City Market, just because it was newer, it had opened in twenty-nineteen, and I got in touch with the director and founder of that organization who shared with me a few different things, but one of the things that he talked about was the importance of varied funding sources to get it built. And the layers of programming activities that need to happen there to keep it alive. So additionally, he did mention that when they had done market surveys, and they had only been open three years when we spoke, but he did say that what their customers and followers really wanted and asked for time and time again was more ethnic food. I thought that was interesting. So this gelled into our vision in December of twenty-twenty-two. When what we learned about our community's needs became a vision and really New Venture Advisors worked towards those. And during our study, the PGAV, especially post-pandemic with food, the issue of food insecurity and access became more important. And for that reason, the concept began to evolve into a food-based ecosystem. So in this evolution, as we pivoted to focus on this food access, food insecurity, ending hunger in our community, this image is one that I drew on the whiteboard in my office that ultimately became the final work product from PGAV planners, who used this to turn it into a story map, continues to show on our website for Renew Moline, explaining what could be achieved by such a project. And we also used that story map to pitch a request for funding to the John Gere Foundation. So along that time, we also discovered New Venture Advisors, and we were really fortunate to have come across them. The firm has vast and deep knowledge in food systems of all kinds, and you'll hear that breadth of knowledge today when Andrea presents to you. The box at the right hand on the slide shows just a summary of the different types of their work from their website. And I think the thing that we took note of really is that fifty food processing kitchen incubator-type facilities they've done studies for and tried to, and gotten those off the ground. And then I guess just overall, after her presentation, I would encourage you to explore her knowledge of this project, what she learned in our community, and what our stakeholders need, and how and why other similar markets succeed or fail, and you'll see she's given us a lot to think about. So I want to close by just saying thank you. We intentionally conducted this work under the banner of MKSK's Riverfront Master Plan, because it's potential for a project like this to be an anchor for the riverfront area. MKSK conducted the circulation studies and completed the renderings that you'll see at the end of Andrea's presentation. And finally, I want to recognize and thank the Renew Moline Board of Directors, who funded part of this study with reserve funds from Renew Moline. I also want to thank the John Gere Foundation for providing a hundred thousand dollar contribution and a vote of confidence to complete this study. And finally, I'd like to thank Mayarai Padi and Administrator Vitas for allowing us to evaluate the potential of this building and for your support and time in working through the project details and the deliverables that you'll see today. So without further ado, I will introduce Andrea Carbin from New Venture Advisors.
Hi, good afternoon, how's everyone? I'm excited to be here with you today. This is, as Alex noted, been a multi-year process where we've helped to reevaluate the studies that we've provided in the past, and really explored this as a public market concept and its fit to your community. As she said, my name is Andrea Carbin and the Senior Director at New Venture Advisors. I've worked with this firm for about seven years. My focus and background is in operations and infrastructure. NDA is a food system-specific firm. We look specifically at food projects, at system and policy across the country, and that infrastructure and development. We were brought into this project to help provide contacts with some specific stakeholder groups. There have been tremendous community input, there have been retail and consumer analyses done. But one of the things that NDA firmly believes is that as you start to put together a structure and a facility plan like this, especially with a business model as complex as a public market, you really do need to hear directly from the stakeholders who will use the facility, who will help make the facility function, who will operate and oversee it, and who will be the predominant part of any type of facility at this strike. So that was one of our primary focus of our work here, was providing contacts to help to remember what the concept overall could hopefully contribute into this community, but help to collaborate and build upon some of the work done by the good organizations that call this home. So this is the scope that we shaped over the course of two different sections. That first section, we really focused on market analysis, engaging those key stakeholder groups. We wanted to speak with small businesses, with local organizations, with farm and ag groups, and with community organizations to really understand the model that we're doing well, what was its focus, what was its need, what was its contribution that it could make to your community? How could it help to grow upon existing organizational work? How could it help contribute to small businesses and help them grow and develop within the same? The type of venture that we know can be most successful is a venture that is a community asset that helps businesses beyond what is already functionally happening. So we have some great incubation happening here in Moline, we have some great support for folks coming out of cottage industry in their homes. If they're needed, it's aimed, and the dialogue that started to develop a little bit of a next term. Once we started to hear from folks what were the components, programs, the spaces, the pieces that we wanted to focus on, we then worked through two extensive modeling scopes. We looked at operations, management, and development structures. And then we did a financial deep dive in order to look at not only extensive design-based cost budgeting, but also financial P and Ls in order to build pricing structures that were sustainable and that were realistic. I always like to stress the input and interest that was gathered throughout the study. I will say this multiple times in this presentation, this is not always the case. But I think this is a big compliment to the involvement and the investment of stakeholders throughout your community. I work in communities across the country and oftentimes have a difficult time getting folks to get involved in projects. And so you can see the various different groups that engage with us over the course of the project. There was certainly a heavy feedback channel that we opened and that folks were willing and involved and invested to get involved in. I think of note are in that bottom-left corner. We had sixteen vendors, and then six vendors follow-up as well to specifically sit down with us and go page through page through financial models and give us direct feedback. On the right-hand side, you can see over twenty-four organizations who have expressed direct interest in the project, whether it's collaborative interest and ability to provide programming, provide operational support to use or operate one of the spaces. So those are really notable interest markers. That is certainly one of the first levers of feasibility that we always look for. As Alex mentioned, the project started to take on a new characteristic as we started to talk about it as a public market rather than as a food hall. I like to stress that the food retail model has adapted very, very much over the years. You know, what a public market is today really has some of its opening stripes in the malls and food ports of the early nineteen-eighties and nineteen-nineties. But what makes a public market unique is that it is not just a retail play. It is the idea of taking a facility or an infrastructure and layering on the programs, the services, the support organizations, and the continuation needs that those small businesses who choose to make their home as retail vendors, as production workers, or as current users of the space need in order to thrive. Some of the other models have really struggled post-pandemic. I think it's notable to see that we're seeing tremendous interest in public markets across the country and communities of all different sizes. It is a collaborative model that really refocuses on multiple support levers, which also creates multiple revenue opportunities throughout the building, and it has presented itself to be a relatively stable model with a lot of growth opportunity. When we talk about refocusing as a public market, we really like to think about the themes that we heard developing from all the stakeholders and the feedback points. People were looking specifically for spaces for economic and business development. They were looking for growth spaces. There are multiple stages that a business goes through in its lifecycle, when it grows from an idea or a concept into its owner in their head, and has to eventually find its own production space or retail space and hopefully occupy your business district. What is lacking in different communities, and one of the things we found lacking here in Moline, is that some of those support spaces, those continuation spaces that are needed throughout that lifecycle are not here, or they're not affordably priced so that businesses can take advantage of them and help build upon the structure and success that they're building. I think it's important to note that it's a multi-input model, and it's what makes a public market business structure so successful over the course of time, and what makes it different from a traditional food hall or mall-type food port. The riverfront redevelopment was also a really attractive and important part of a lot of the discussions that we had around the public market, because they are symbiotic. You know, the public, or the riverfront redevelopment would attract walking engagement, it would attract customers, it would attract a flow of people who could help those businesses to start to grow with an audience, and to help grow in supports with the programs that they were focused on. I keep talking about the collaborative ecosystem, and I mentioned, you know, that lifespan that small businesses go through. When we talk about small businesses' failure points, failure points are usually at those transition moments where a small business experiences a growth spurt. They have an idea, they're operating in their home, they're selling to their mom and friends, they find some growth, they move into an incubator. That incubator helps provide them the low-market or discount access, helps them to build upon that idea and grow their business a little bit. They then grow and they need some sort of transition into a next stage. Maybe it's a retail space, production space. They need additional coaching and support to help their business grow and scale. Then they transition hopefully eventually into their own type of retail establishment, their own production space. They might move into their own facility or build, develop with their own. Each one of those transition points is a critical time period where if they don't have access to either the right type of facility and the right price point for those facilities, or the right type of coaching and support services, they will typically have high failure points, and it's called the valley of death, that sort of cycle of up and down that businesses go through. The public market model is successful across the country because it offers these spaces. It offers these programs and services that can help to support businesses during these critical juncture points, and it is meant to be collaborative with the opportunities that are already being created. We have great incubation happening here across the city. We have, you know, the Great Farmers Market, we have Ricardo, we have the Small Business Community. All of those are great ways for businesses to find early-stage success, to start down there. What we heard frequently from many of their users and from them themselves is that the second stage of business, those next-stage opportunities to move into retail or to find that growth scenario are what are missing, and it's what this public market model did present. Based on all of that feedback and input, we started working our way into some different concepts. And it was there that many of you that are here today passed us with looking at this project from two different perspectives. One was to look at the project just to validate the idea of a public market here from Moline. Was the idea of this business structure feasible and workable within your city? Did it have the demand and the interest? Would it offer the right supports that folks were saying they needed? The second piece was to evaluate if there was a location that was a fit. Was this a fit potentially for this people building? Was this a good usage of that infrastructure and that location as a part of the riverfront redevelopment? And if not, or if there were complications of that model, was there a significant upside to putting the public market somewhere else, potentially as part of the riverfront development, or to look at other options? When we entered into the project, we were presented with what we're calling a model. An alternate site also in riverfront redevelopment was an adjacent parcel. You can see it right there, right next to the Spiegel Building. What we ended up finding is that the site specifically that we were exploring as the alternate had some very significant restrictions in terms of traffic and truck access and logistics support. So in the end, you'll hear me mention a few times that that site was probably not compatible. That was our final finding. But what it did help us to do is look at different efficiencies that we could gain, some comparison and contrasting with the ideas that were being developed specifically for Spiegel. And it really presented us with a fuller picture of all the different opportunities that might be available for a public market model in your area. We do want to stress that I think a location somewhere in the riverfront redevelopment zone such as Spiegel is ideal for a public market concept. And the reason I say that is that it is, you know, it can draw the potential foot traffic and be symbiotic with the goals of the development and the ways of the focus of a public market and trying to offer. So I do think it's important that a site, whatever site is eventually considered, does have some of those markers in order to support the structure. So we're going to take a look over the next few slides. I know these are very tiny on the screen, so I think many of you saw them, and I hand out in front of you. We're looking at what's called Model A. Just a reminder, Model A was designed specifically for the Spiegel Building. So these are our design renderings are really helping us to do a couple of things. One, to cost the project as in-depth as we could, so we put everything by a per-square-foot basis. Also, just to look at all the different efficiencies and collaboration spaces we could create, how we could overlap all those programs, spaces, people, opportunities that we were trying to build into the model. It's important to note that, you know, these are all concepts. These are ideas that were put together. We think they are potentially the most efficient use of some of this space. There is some great revenue that can be generated when the space is designed this way. But these will be adapted in any final iteration. We're not proposing that this gets built tomorrow. And so there will still need to be more steps in this process where other development partners are engaged, and this will go through additional iterations as it works toward that end goal. So we're looking here first at the first floor. The first floor is our primary entryway for the public. On the left-hand side there, you see there's a multitude of different retail spaces. They're designed specifically to be scaled for very starting-level businesses, and that's sort of collaborative module in the center with ability to grow into some larger spaces for small and mid-sized businesses that support it. We also have an anchor interest from a couple of folks who might want to take a little more square footage than we originally projected, so there's some great opportunity there. On the right-hand side of the screen is the primary production corridor. There's two sets of shared production kitchen space, significant storage space, as well as logistics space that connects to docks from the outside. The second floor, on the Spiegel model specifically, we built two floors that had these mezzanine structures. And I know Administrator Venus has always loved our mezzanine structures, but they do just add some attraction, some open floor feeling through the different levels. But it is something that we explored in the alternative model, the Model B. We looked at removing those in order to see what the cost balance was in terms of both development cost as well as efficiency and revenue generation across some phases. So in this specific one that we were designing around the model of the Spiegel Building, I'm sorry, the second floor is really that first graduation space. As businesses graduate out of the smaller retail on the first floor, there's some larger retail stock here, as well as seating to engage the public and bring them up through the floors, and then some additional support structures to the side. On the third and fourth floor, we're really creating opportunities for anchor tenants to come in, to find office space, event space, and creating some of those production spaces that we heard are essential to some of the businesses that are ready to grow. If they need space where they can produce, and then maybe connect it down to retail on the main floors. If they need collaborative spaces to work together across projects, this floor offers those opportunities, as well as creating a large demonstration kitchen through the central, which puts the public presence in center back into their audience, and then creating a classroom for a lot of the different educational program we heard interesting as well. On the fourth floor, we predominantly were focusing on officeing. I think it's important to note, as these designs are wrapping up, we also heard interest from a couple of different anchor tenants looking for over seven and a half to ten thousand square feet of office space. So there is a lot of flexibility and opportunity to use this building in different ways. Again, you could remove the mezzanine and add in some additional office square footage. This, you know, floor though is representative, again, of the multi-function and collaboration and flexibility we're trying to build into the model throughout the project. You'll see multiple areas where folks can work together, for working office space, private office space, and shared functionality. In the Spiegel model, we also explored the idea of a rooftop restaurant. There was some interest in this from the community input cycles. We did not have an operator identified during the course of our outreach for this, so we did call this a risk proposition. So there is an opportunity here to create some revenue enhancement for the building, but it comes with a high risk, but there is not currently a specific operator attached. We did explore the opportunity, and you'll see that on the financial slide next, that we looked at with and without the restaurant or the Spiegel version. The idea there is that you could do one of two things. You could program the roof as a green roof or just as a standard mechanical support, or you could create some structural foundation for yourself, go back and have some sort of enhancement on the roof as a future option for the facility. So that might be a restaurant, it could be an event space, it could be some other functionality. So once we completed the design and development part of the process, we moved into the financials. As I said, our first priority was to build out some very specific and detailed costing, to really look at the price tag of the project in our highly inflationary construction environment. But we also wanted to make sure we could look across the two models, the Spiegel version with and without the restaurant, that's that first column in the middle column, and then what we're calling Model B, or some alternative model that could offer some different efficiencies of space. I think it's important to note that Model B, it has a slightly less expensive price tag. We're still talking millions for all three. But the Model B, what it does offer us is a little bit of cost savings that we might be able to find for square footage with building it across three levels versus the Spiegel store, as well as eliminating some of those spaces like mezzanine features and such. One thing that we see across all three models, which I think is notable, is that we do have EBITDA positive in year one, which you could proxy for stability and sustainability of revenues. And we did find Blue Sky at the end of at least year three or year four for all models. That means we found that there is sustainability within each of these models, and there is an opportunity for these to be break-even and workable financial structures, even within the complexity of a public market model. So that brings us to our conclusions. In this setting, we did find and confirm that the public market concept is a viable one for the city of Moline. I think it is important to note again, the interest, the engagement, and the feedback that was significant throughout the whole process. And it certainly reaffirmed all of these programs and spaces and services that we programmed into the different concept models that were developed. In the center column there, we did confirm that the public market could fit quite comfortably, and there could be very successful revenue generation using the Spiegel as its home. The riverfront redevelopment, like I said, was a big companion to that. It created that walkability, it created the attraction and draw that would help support the businesses of various stages in it, and it did offer a good opportunity from a logistics standpoint. On the right-hand side, we do have some great learnings and efficiencies that we found in that alternative model, but the site that we explored it on was not a good fit for the project, and we asked that that not be what we pursue. I do think it's important to note that these feasibility conclusions are giving you a recommendation that the public market is a good fit for your community. It is validating the idea of the concept. It is not recommending you build it tomorrow, because there are some very critical next steps, and there are still some iterations that need to happen across the project. I always like to flag the benefits that are available through public market to the community. Job creation is a significant one. We see not only the development of jobs within the facility itself, but in the businesses that grow there and go on to hire employees and grow out of the facility and build businesses beyond that. That small business development throughout all the different lifecycle moments is also critical. And then this project in particular, there is some great food opportunities that are presented. There's connection points into food access that could be built upon and fortified, as well as the opportunities and different educational and programmatic opportunities that were explored around. We did spend quite a bit of time looking at management structures for the model. I know the city had concerns about whether this project was being aimed for the city to manage. What we ended up exploring were all different avenues, public ownership, private ownership, and various different collaborative models. And the one that we landed on that we think might be the best fit for this specific model is what's called a P3, or a public-private partnership. What I'm sharing here on the screen are three excellent examples of cities that have built public markets with this specific management structure underneath it. In this case, generally, the city is a partner as a landowner or an owner of the facility. They are oftentimes heavily involved during the development process, bringing the concept into reality. And then they generally step back and allow nonprofits or other entities to take on the day-to-day operations and the core operational roles as the projects. So I'd encourage you to look a little deeper into these three examples. They offer some great, you know, examples and comparisons of how this might be operated. As I mentioned, we are at step one. We're in that very first, like, move column to the left, is as we finish out these studies. And there's a process that we've all been in for about three to five years, so I think you have some steps in front of you. What we're hoping to see is that your city and the partners in this project move this into redevelopment next. I think it should and could continue into that next step, and there's some critical next actions that we have on the next slide. Predevelopment is the stage where relationships are solidified, where a site is finalized, where the concept comes and starts to come together and can become more concrete, and where funding is secured and identified. Beyond that, construction can take place, and then the implementation and operation. So the critical next steps that I keep referring to is that the project partners can really be identified and start to work together to take this out of this concept base. The very first box is important, starting to identify the key roles. Who is going to help champion the development, help find the right bits for these different roles? Who are the potential operators that have raised their hand and would like to see a new forward? Who are the funding partners? What role did the city play, et cetera? Beyond that, starting to line up and nail down anchors that might want to be a part of different phases, and to then finalize programming and design and site are all part of those initial steps that will help this become a real project that heads into construction and development. So again, just shouldn't go into the ground tomorrow, but what you should do is move this into that predevelopment step. You have a very strong concept here that your community has spoken out very loudly about, and I think a good opportunity for you to build on. I did just want to touch on funding. You know, these are expensive projects. We're talking, you know, the ballpark of twenty-one to twenty-five million, that's the total bill price that was projected. And so this will require a highly diversified funding. It is very rare that these public markets are funded solely by a city. It's usually a. It's usually a combination of the efforts and the funding vehicles that multiple partners can bring to the table. We highlighted several different tools here, um, but all of those different partners that bring food access opportunity, that bring ag or connections into farming, that brings small business development opportunity. Those all help connect you to different funding streams that are unified against that theme or that objective. So it will be important to find great partners who can play important roles in developing the funding, developing the next steps and helping this to launch forward. I'm going to share a couple of images to just help bring things to life. I think I'm going a few minutes over, but um I just want to say thank you very much for your time and attention and also happy to answer any questions or expand on anything. But first, we have three views. Uh, this is a great view of the first floor, highlighting that uh retail corridor and the opportunity to bring, you can see multifaceted sides to those different retail kiosks that are built there on the main level. On the main level, we also have the incubation kitchen. This would be one of the two corridors. You can see it's designed as a volume or production kitchen to help small businesses to start to cook at volume or develop products at scale. And then up on that um third floor, where we looked at the different production spaces and we got demonstration kitchen. The demonstration kitchen was uh conceptualized to be available to all agents. And to create opportunities to do both hands-on as well as education on the last programming. As we put a little bit of everybody in the mix there, you know, starting to do some follow-up programs. Thank you very much. Yeah, we have a question. We'll put it up in the council and that was the sign that asked because staff and family uh feedback or directions. That's what came in.
Uh, I asked this a few years ago and I'm not endorsing it, but did we explore tearing down Spiegel and building something in its place that is more suitable?
In terms of what is the benefit of the structure?
Correct.
Yes. We looked at the structure from four different standpoints, um, with the architect that's on our team. So we looked at the benefit of tearing down the structure and just using your parcel. Uh, the idea of trying to salvage as much of the structure that currently exists, you know, trying to salvage floors or different pieces of it, try and find some cost savings along the way. And then two different iterations where we essentially keep the shell and then create renewed structure inside. What we found was overall, yes, you can find a little cost benefit savings in terms of tearing the structure down using a parcel. I think that's all, you have the efficiency that might be gained such as from our alternative model, maybe doing three floors instead of four or two floors, whatever ends up being the right case. The difficult piece was that in a lot of the interactions that we heard, there was a draw and a connection point that folks attributed to Spiegel. It has a historic significance within your community. It has some different characters to it that folks attach to and and think about in terms of that parcel. So if you were going to invest in utilizing that space, making it a key asset and a feature piece of your Riverfront redevelopment. The cost savings did not outweigh some of those extra benefits that could be built around it. So when we costed out, which is the scenario we use for both versions of the model through this evil iteration. We assume a gut renovation of the structure with reinforcement, steel structure reinforcement across the beach. The same thing which would be required of the new build essentially. So you get a small benefit from saving the shell structure, from saving some of the, you know, historic edifice and the design features of it. But you're essentially getting the new build benefit on the interior as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Schreger.
Yeah, following um the same path, I, I, my default would be to say, yeah, I'd love to save the building, always. Um, I'm actually a little surprised, ha- happily so, but the price difference was not as large as I expected from the new build to um the reconstruction. And then but on top of that, that by using this or building, it's going to give us access to a few more credits and opportunities for funding. Um, that sort of puts it on a more even plank, which I had one of those numbers before we committed anywhere. This is maybe more for our staff. How confident are we in the structural soundness of the building to do? I mean, I know when they come in with the architecture and what's they can see, but how sure are we that the building will hold up to what we want to do?
Yeah, I'm no engineer, but I will, I will say that, you know, we do use structural engineers to assess and evaluate properties similar to the tower. To know that the tower withstand a hurricane literally, like what we learned. So we know the tower is not going to fall over and crush Spiegel. Based on what Andrea is telling you though, I mean, I've, I've done this before in other cities. You take a historical edifice and you've got the interior and you go with steel superstructure inside and then attach the exterior walls to that to your, your structure. It's not going to move. Not going anywhere.
You're creating a reinforcement in the structure.
That's exactly what's happening.
If it's falling apart, we're going to rebuild the inside and then it won't be falling apart anyway.
And we already did a structural study of some sort with at least the rooftops.
Correct.
That's accurate. Um, a few years ago, we're newly evaluated whether or not something could be put on the roof. So we know the occupancy loads per floor and Andrea had all that information when they did their work.
I'd also just make a comment on the construction pricing. Asking a little gap of time, maybe when the study was done in current, I would say no other degree of salt in the numbers as construction cost is changing rapidly by the day. Um, but one thing that we are seeing is that the benefit of significant cost savings when people think of renovate for a new build. Really has to come from salvage of structure and materials and the reduction in labor that goes along with that. And this building doesn't offer that. So it essentially offers the benefits of the, the Spiegel name and the benefits of a historical connection point to building with a new structure built within. So there, it's a more comparable cost between A and B in that, in that sense.
Is it also fair to um say that because of the timeline of pre-development, probably up to actually thirty-six months or three years? I, I wrote down three to five years before we went to the development stage. So there's a, there, there's possibility of construction costs changing for the better in that kind of timeframe as well?
Yeah, I mean, the project will happen as fast as you'd want it to happen. But the development timeline we've laid out is realistic. And yes, I, I would say, if I was a betting person, that the construction cost will change either six more times before you all are at the costing stage with the final development partner.
Thank you. Mr. Schreger.
Does either, I think you sort of started to go down those pathways, I'm just asking, I know. Is one or the other of those models, would it be more in price changes? Or is it essentially the same materials, the same everything, it's not going to be, I know like, well, if we need more X or Y, that's a few.
I mean, I'm just saying, you just might like it, there's a lot of glass and steel supported on that team, so maybe eliminating yours might give you a few dollars, but um.
But it's the installation, it's the elements. You know, we even, you know, and just so you, some of you were here, maybe you weren't, but then as we were dismantling the bridge. And there were certain elements of the bridge that were made available, which we hooked. Which were basically the large, um, how do I describe it, I'm not an engineer, but they, they, they basically supported the entire bridge as it was suspended. You know, and all of the steel cabling went through it, so all of those elements that we captured. We captured and they're stored over at Public Works Garage. In hopes that if this building became used in the future, that we could suspend, you know. What appears to be as if it was being suspended from that same bridge structure, that infrastructure on the bridge. Whether it was actually being used or it was just artificially being, here's the videos, we'll apply those into this building. So.
There'd be those with the history connection for you.
Yeah, so I mean, and that's kind of a conversation long before we ever met even. I know, goes back to when I was working alone here with, with Alex, you know, back in twenty-one. So there's a lot of opportunity here. I think, I think the one point is, and you know, kind of like takeaway, that I think you touched on pretty much everything, but I think the one takeaway is there's a build to what happens next slide. Right? The answer to the question, the discussion I were having appears there. You gotta build everything to get there. And once you've built up the model and you've got all the support in place, then and only then do you really settle in on a site and a build. And if you don't want to overbuild, you can't underbuild. You want to do it so it's the truth, that's right. So we're nowhere near deciding whether it's Spiegel or an attorney state. I just want to go there, stay in.
Fair, and that also lines up with our Riverfront reimagine plans as well in terms of sort of deciding what directions to go.
Mm-hmm, I agree, yeah.
I have a couple of questions though, but I'll let, and I, I'm sorry, Ms. Castro, do you have questions?
It's hard to say.
No, I don't think so. Okay, finish it again.
Can you just share more of um?
That's absolutely good. So when we look at um structuring, you know, if we look at it from a costing thing from first, we look at what it would take to operate the facility over the course of an annual calendar year. So we look at all different cost, cost categories across uh operations specialized within each space. What some of those costs might be shared or what could be taken on by the building operator. Uh, we burden this model with all costs, assuming that a centralized operator or some grouping of operators would, would take on all those costs and not uh pump them out to a specific paying tenant. Um, so all the costs are detailed by uh space within the facility. And then we also project out utilities and all different insurances and tax and everything that comes along with it. In terms of the revenue structure, what we do is we take it per space and we try and devise pricing models that look at the different tiers of users that would be working within that space. We look at market rate users, we look at discounted users, we look at users that might need free access. And then trying to match those pricing models against the original information you heard from different partner organizations across your community. Around what kind of pricing is being used in other facilities, uh, what different folks might, uh, you know, what different population groups might be and what those tiers might balance out to be. And then we did this, we then took those pricing models back to specific user groups and asked for their feedback. And the feedback they gave us in the first round was, was too high. So we actually did a third iteration of the model where we took price points down significantly in comparison to some of the facilities that are in some of the urban structures around you. And then we also overlaid those reduced pricing models with a higher discounted and free access group. It's assuming that this facility is trying to lure in very early-stage businesses to then build upon their success over the course of it. We wanted that projection to be balanced by affordability. And so all the revenue structures are built with that in mind. So then what we did was price out those in the most popular market models right now. So for example, the shared kitchen is built on the assumption of rental per hour. Um, according to the different types of space and the access to different equipments and storage, it's built out by each individual uh rack or pallet that would be stored within it. The retail is based on a square footage assumption, or for the super early-stage retail on the main floor, it's built in a kiosk or a model that's. And then we built that same sort of thinking as we went up the different levels. So if it's something that's a shared space, we tried to build it in hourly, a weekly or a monthly rental model. If it's something that would be an anchor tenant or a privatized space, we built it down in a square footage model. And we applied those same projections that user mix across all those different revenue models. The last thing that we overlaid on top of everything was a utilization assumption. I think it's really important that the utilization was considered because a lot of these revenue structures, you build out these projections around revenue. But you know that these public markets are generally operating somewhere around sixty to seventy or eighty percent at good, stable, even utilization over the course of time. So we started in early days with around thirty to forty percent utilization across the space. And then built up that context over the course of the first five to seven years in order to allow some growth, but in order to allow it to build and attract an audience. And stabilize the different users that would be in the different spaces.
So the numbers that you had for uh projected visitors at scales of?
The projected visitor scales, so there were some consumer and retail analysis done um just prior to our study. We revisited it that when we were looking at it. So the, the revenue numbers fall within the parameters of the projected consumer draw that could be seen. We upped some of those consumer numbers based on population increases in your area. So we looked at the different brains that were done during the initial analysis study in order to gut check and make sure the projections that we were looking for to stabilize usership. Were not bigger than what is available within your community. Now, I think it's important to note too, we built most of these, so public markets generally operate on what's called a one, two, three revenue structure and their pricing models. So they'll oftentimes for a retail kiosk, for example, of small ones that are on the first level, they'll build in a, a square footage assumption. So it's going to be eight dollars a square foot for a seventy-square-foot area. And then number two is that they then build in what's called a cost plus. They take an additional on top of that to help offset utilities and coaching and all the different services that are built on top of it. And then the number three is that they then sometimes ask for a percentage of revenue that that kiosk is putting into the market back. In order to help offset and defray operational costs. We took out the three of all of the entry-level assumptions in the building. Because I don't think it's appropriate and we got feedback specifically from those starting businesses that that became a, a pricing structure that they couldn't support. So we assumed that, for example, if you do decide to build the restaurant eventually, that would have a retail, a number three, kick back into the building at some point. Because it would be a stabilized full-growth operator that would run that facility. For example, if you then also took on a significant tenant, they would have a one-two structure, right? They would have their square footage rent plus a percentage of commons charges. But those entry-level businesses that are renting a retail kiosk, we did not want to burden them with that extra step and ask for a percentage of retail as well. So we tried to keep the pricing model as simplified as possible as a, a rent or a rental per hour plus just a contribution into an incubation acceleration or common charge that would offset the services.
Thank you.
Of course.
Probably more than you.
Actually, it's, it's extremely detailed, but in a way that's digestible and I, I really appreciate you going with all of that. I, I have a couple of follow-up questions unless there's more from the council at this point.
Well, I just, uh, I thank you for putting all this together because initially, um, we talked about having, and I, I can't remember the headline, maybe you remember. Uh, the, the mayor of Pittsburgh said, go forth like that. So nobody else around here has anything quite like this. So even with these numbers, if anything, I was looking at it, it might be a little small as far as the number of, like, we have so many restaurants here that could fit all those levels. Uh, but that said, we, even looking at the pricing, while, while we are talking about millions of dollars, um, we also don't want to shortchange ourselves and go a little too long, try to be too conservative. And do something that, you know, later on we might regret and regret, so that's just my take. But uh, yeah, it looks great and I think that's what's going to make us stand out from the whole region. You know, it's uh not differences of quantities, and I can also see this as a uh marketing point for the whole region. I can already see the color of this at Fox Cities Magazine and other markets showcasing this because these things do attract. Like when I travel to other places, I, I see stuff like this. I love the one in Milwaukee, it's got the mezzanine and it's perfect for families, so, uh, so again, thank you for putting it together. Yeah, I, I just appreciate you for letting me explain it and uh, but I also feel like we need to go real deep with something like this.
Great, thank you. Um, I was curious, first off, I love that the idea still has traction, it sounds like, from the, the council. And we're, and you've shown us through the data that it can be sustainable, it's just a matter of which pathway we choose. Um, so I love that it continues to build upon this idea that we provide opportunity here in Moline. That entrepreneurship is something we're serious about. And I think that's um, that's wonderful for people from all walks of life that live here or want to start a business here. Um, and we need to keep investing in that because that's kind of like a local control or, or local issue solu- local solution. To, to opportunity. So I love this idea of the pilot, uh, pop-up, pop-up pilots. I know, and I'm mayor of Tiger, Oregon, they have something that's kind of like that. It's focused on um food trucks and what have you, but, but they do it at a, at a city park. And there's probably multiple examples across the country, that's just one that I've been introduced to. I think it'd be great in this in-between period of the pre-development phase to be doing that and offering that and seeing how many people come out to it and all of that kind of stuff. We already know how successful some of that is at my platform. Um, so I really appreciate that. I am curious though, you mentioned in the beginning, the preamble, Alex, that uh you, you had studied that with fifty-three markets like this, or you created fifty-three? Will you get that number right? We have been the consultants on fifty.
Fifty processing and shared kitchen facilities across the country. So they are not all operational yet. Some of them are still finishing their development cycles, but some of them, I, I'm actually going and going back to Michigan tomorrow, but I'm going to be going to a groundbreaking for one in Eastings, Michigan later this week. So there are multiple ones that are in the ground break stage or in the construction development stage. We have about ten percent of the total projects across our most recent business that are fully operational at this point.
And that's where I was headed, my question is, um, are there any that have not made it? That just like something happened and the projections you said, and if that's the case, right? What, what were those pitfalls or like, what are the pitfalls for communities that try to do this kind of thing? Um, even though you're giving really thorough advice.
We have not yet had one that we deemed feasible go into development and then fail post. I have had multiple projects that I, I have not recommended as feasible or that I have recommended pivots for them to explore. I love to suggest a pivot rather than a whole, don't go anywhere near this. Um, but we have, we've had, I would say at least a quarter of projects, not just specifically in this category, but we look at meat processing, we look at agricultural hubs, we look at a lot of different types. And I would say across the variety of businesses, we do see somewhere between about, I may use a statistic the other day, around twenty-six to forty-two percent of these that we recommend some sort of significant pivot from where they start. And when I say that, it might be something as simple as somebody came in big and said, you really want to build a public market that does this and does that? And then exploring in their community, we identified five other businesses that that is a significant part of their structural business model and that the public market would directly compete with them within the neighborhoods and community areas that they were looking to do it, or that their community members had other high priority agenda items that did not include retail production space or some of the different offerings that are present that ilk offered. So we generally then help them to refocus the project on something that could be more beneficial to the community or to help them figure out how to take a pause or to scale back significantly to contribute into the ecosystem that they have. And then actually, your first comment about the pop-up scenario, I would encourage you to explore options like that and to go back to the same partners that have been so integral to this project work to date and say, what is the next step? What is the build upon what you've created that could help the residents and users of their facilities as you explore this graduation facility for them to do, thank you. I always like to point to, there's a project out on the west coast called Alchemist Kitchen. And Alchemist did a feasibility study around a shared kitchen with retail as a multi-use. They weren't calling it a public market. Um, they got all the way through the feasibility study, they were very excited. There was not a parcel or a building within their pricing range that of any ilk or that was sized to support the idea that they had developed. And so our recommendations at the end of feasibility, as they entered into the final phases of their feasibility, they made the choice to try and find pivots, to find pilot projects, to find staged phased development approaches to give them time and opportunity to find more compatible facilities that they could actually afford. And so they launched two virtual programs that were programmed sort of pop-ups that were an ability for them to build out the programatics and the partnerships over the course of a few years. They eventually were able to find a, a first facility that they built into the shared kitchen and some of the priority production spaces. And they're hoping to break around in the next two years on their full public market concept that they started from at day one. So it was a different timeline. It had some phases and some stages that happened between point A and point B. But they eventually got to where they wanted to go and where their community wanted to go with them, but that they didn't have the right key infrastructure pieces to support them along the way.
Okay. And then, um, you know, it's, it strikes us, you mentioned, uh, you know, you can see us, uh, go big or go home kind of, is that a fair representation in some ways? Um, we tend, I mean, in the recent history here in Moline, we like to dream big and then find ways to make those dreams come true and bring good things and, like I said, opportunity to the community. Um, but of course, doing this with the eyes wide open, we know we're punching above our weight a lot of the time, right? Like the, there are not other smaller cities that have either the space or the financing actions or, um, the public will, right? Or the, you know, representative government will to, to get something like this done. So I was, I noticed, you know, you'd mentioned two big cities, really a well-established place, place market and all that. And Flint is a little bit smaller, but still bigger than us. In those fifty projects where you made recommendations, are there smaller cities more like us doing something like this?
Yeah, and I think Administrator Vida's asked for some of these examples, the projects. So there, there is a roster in one of the reports of some, uh, what we were calling, um, sort of mid-size semi-urban examples that had been successful or that found strength through the project. So, you know, I, I, I tried to find some parallels in terms of the populations. I noticed from the work of the prior study, also looked at markets based on the population size of the groupings that they were there with. I tried to find a couple of examples as well that were a little bit more ambitious projects for smaller population centers. Um, I think we found a couple, I know there's one in Colorado, we looked at, um, there, there's a new project that is just finishing development in the southern part of Washington state, southwest side of Washington state. It's called the Timber Market. We provided some examples, I can make sure I can pull that and have that.
That's fine, I just want to, you know, it's just a part of the whole.
Yeah.
Um, but also we are uniquely situated, right? So we have our own statistics for the city of Moline, but in a, in an area of close to four hundred thousand, those change the dynamics to some degree.
How many of your projects have rooftop restaurants, green spaces slash bars?
There is a, 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 a turn towards programming green space on routes a lot. I will not, I will say the rooftop restaurant was a new one for me in this project. I have not programmed that into other facilities. Now, I have programmed, um, we actually work for the project in Sheehan, Chicago, I know. I work for the project out in Florida, so slightly different climates in both of those situations. Um, but both of those created event space on the rooftops of their projects. So they, they built the structural supports, they built some like small catering support space, and then they created a covered sort of pavilion that allows for events to happen on a rooftop. They did not program full kitchen equipment and some of the other features that we considered in the one staple model for this project.
I have two questions. One is your EBITDA, EBITDA projections. In your previous, um, uh, uh, projects, have they been pretty accurate? I, I, this is all projections and obviously taxes and a factor, but since you own, so it's kind of a nice little benefit. Um, but I'm just kind of looking at year one EBITDA projections as being good is, is pretty unheard of. So it would cover the loan payments after year one?
We looked at EBITDA first and then we put in interest and all the other pieces. We looked at cash flow as well. Now, cash flow was not positive until years three or four. EBITDA was stable in years one and two, I believe across all four of the models. Now, our EBITDA predictions have been very strong across the projects that we've worked with. And we'll say, um, it is a continued discussion that we have had throughout this project around who is going to operate the different pieces of this, meaning the development project and the operations of the day. So we did not burden the operational P and L model with the full debt load to, because we considered that there would be a portion of debt, a portion of other investment, a portion across those different areas. So yes, if you burdened the full model with the complete debt scenario across the entire costing scenario, then the EBITDA would.
Right, understood. So understanding of, of, of a very diverse funding pool, that's a different conversation. I have a question for the chief, actually. We're looking at a, a, a building with a lot of density and a lot of traffic. How does this add to, uh, policing? What would be the needed things we would have for security in a building?
Well, this is the first I've heard of this, I haven't seen, you know, design. I think Fire Chief and I have worked really diligently with Chris Farr on, uh, a master plan down there for traffic, um, things like that. I think it was a big concern for us and the, the master plan, the proximity to the I C N B four off ramp of, you know, people turning right in there in the backup. So, I mean, I think it's worth a, a deeper dive, but I mean, you know, I don't know what the capacity and the number of people that are down there. You know, I think as, as, uh, the city grows, uh, we'll continue to have to evaluate, uh, the number of officers that we have, uh, throughout the entire city. The city administrator and I met just yesterday or Monday, I guess, about, um, you know, other development the city has going on, other areas of the, of the city that, that stress, uh, response times. Um, uh, you know, where people are located and then officers here has to go all the way out somewhere else. So, you know, I think it's just a constant evaluation. The good thing here is what I heard was this is several years off. And so, um, you know, it's always a balance of the revenues that the city has to support the officers and, and the timing of that. Biggest challenge for us with law enforcement for that is the time to onboard people. Um, so, you know, even, even though five years sounds like it's a ways away, it takes a year. Right now, probably if somebody doesn't make it, you know, we're looking at one to two years to get those staffing numbers back up. So low set you're gonna have.
We'll say we did build security budgeting into the structure itself because most public market facilities are considered faulty zone help. And so they operate on two pads and different security bases. So we have both, uh, human security and key card featured security built into the budget for the facility. And there were traffic and routing studies that were done to look at the traffic flow of cars and trucks of various sizes. Because these markets, you have to have suppliers. We did consider fire trucks in that routing scenario.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, we very much appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move to our second item, eight point two, drone as a first responder beyond visual line of sight vendor quotes.
All right, thank you very much. I will go on here, bring you back your days of childhood, low controlled cars. Uh, so I appreciate the time today. Uh, today I have with the Deputy Chief Andrew Ryan who oversees the Services Bureau. Can I move around or can, you know, on the castle only see me at a certain place?
Only if yours is there, she won't see you.
Okay, uh, and then I have Lieutenant, uh, Eli Solis, uh, who is the Division Commander for the Service Division. Uh, as you know, I've in the past brought, uh, other staff members here to make presentations. So Lieutenant Solis is going to assist me today. Couple of reasons, you know, I always like, uh, for staff development to have people in front of you to get a chance for you to know them, but as well as working individual projects, but also because we tend in the police, particularly in the police department, uh, to have subject matter experts. And I like to lean on the people that are subject matter experts and Lieutenant Solis has been our drone commander from the inception of the program for the last two years. He's done extensive research, as you're going to see, um, uh, that, that he's worked really hard on this project. So I want him also to, to receive some of the accolades for all the hard work that's gone into this program. So today, I know we're running a little bit long here, so I'll try to be as brief as possible. Uh, but we're going to cover a little bit of the drone law, the history of D F R, proof of concept, why rooftops, what's beyond visual line of sight or B V L O S? What is A D S B, quotes, recommendations and a few examples. So I know many of you are familiar with Highland Park. I know the mayor is, uh, very close to the Highland Park mayor. Uh, Highland Park has had some significant, uh, incidents where they have cited in the news, uh, predating their tragedy in twenty twenty-two of, of how drones would have been helpful. And then, as you know, uh, in twenty twenty-two, they had a tragedy. Uh, drones, uh, as a first responder have been around since about two thousand eighteen. They were kind of pioneered in Ensenada, Mexico. Uh, the Chula Vista California Police Department was a pioneer of D F R in the United States. Back in December, I traveled to California on my I A C P campaign. I actually have become friends with the Chula Vista Police Chief. We actually spent some time at A I Summit in Utah, uh, about two weeks after that. We, we stayed in contact, she's also consulted with us on this project. But Chula Vista is globally known, uh, as the D F R pioneers. Uh, Chief Kennedy teaches across the world, including Dubai and other, um, major areas of the United States on drone as first responder. And as you know, as I referenced, tragedy struck in Highland Park in July of twenty twenty-two and there was a rooftop shooter at their Fourth of July festival. So Chief Jogger and I are friends, um, and, uh, between the mayor and the chief, they lobbied very hard to have that law changed in Illinois. And we recognize that Highland Park spearheaded law change in twenty twenty-three, which I'm sorry, that's cut off by the, uh, sharing, but, uh, it, it expanded the ability to have drones as a first responder in Illinois. So they pioneered some change to the Freedom from Drone Surveillance Act, known as the, this amendment known as the Drone as First Responder Act, when it affected June of twenty twenty-three. You can read the statute there, but on the side here, there's ten key areas that the law in Illinois allows drones to be deployed. And for the most part, we're, uh, using probably about eight of them. Uh, thankfully, we haven't had terrorism, we're not investigating a lot of terrorism acts here. Uh, we, we have used drones, uh, for search warrants, uh, to prevent imminent harm or life or forestall the imminent escape of a suspect. We use them for missing persons, you may have, may recall, uh, the case in Rock Island. It turned out unfortunately to be a, uh, a fake case of a young child that went missing. Lieutenant Solis was on scene over there. I think you, uh, you covered a huge amount of territory with the drones. Like we talked about, uh, the area that he searched probably would have taken officers.
It's at least an hour, like over the river bank of twenty minutes.
Um, uh, so we do a lot of traffic crash reconstructions with our drones. We have specialized software for that. Luckily, we haven't had a disaster, but it is also allowed use for a disaster. Lieutenant Solis does some infrastructure inspections of the water towers here. Uh, we've used, of course, for public demonstrations. Number nine is what we're primarily going to be talking about today, Response to Public Safety Answering Points, uh, which is a nine-on-one call center for dispatch calls for service, service when the sole purpose for using a drone is for one or more first responders to locate victims, assist with immediate victim help or safety needs or to coordinate response of emergency vehicles and personnel to an emergency. And then number 10, special events and parades, as you know. Uh, we have, you use them at special events and parades in the city of Moline. Uh, we do post notices, that's required by law, so you've probably seen on our social media, city social media or signs that we put out. Uh, I think Moline for one fifty-one might have been the first event, uh, uh, that we, we didn't have in for one fifty was prior to the law change. So, uh, you know, so the tech, the technology is, as you know, I've, I've run a lot of technology projects the Moline Police Department. Uh, the expansion of the Moline Police Department drone program is the technologies in front of you today. I want to emphasize and Lieutenant Solis has got a couple of visual aids here for you to talk about in a minute. We already have a drone program in the city of Moline. This is going to expand that program, but it meets the city core values, it meets city objectives. And the best part for you is, is, uh, my previous presenter asked you for twenty million dollars, I'm going to ask you for no money. It's cost, it's cost taxpayers no money.
Get a chocolate.
We, uh, this can be funded through, uh, Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Finance Prevention Funding that we re, we, uh, were, became eligible for in twenty twenty-three. It was a long battle, the mayor assisted in getting the funds finally, uh, dispersed, but we have them in hand. And so that's why I'm here now presenting that we actually have the money in a trust fund, uh, here. So we'll move forward to try to spend those. So as you know, the core values, innovation, adaptability and resiliency, uh, innovative solutions to the delivery of services. Uh, of course, objective one point one, technology enhancement and objective two point four, professional public safety. So C and B C is all these needs. David, if you could play that video, a message from my friend, Chief Rex.
So the Chula Vista Police Department flies drones as first responder. Uh, what that means for us and for the community is we use drones to fly to emergency calls for service.
Drones provide invaluable information to officers, sharing with them a visual into what is actually occurring. It makes all the difference to officers, dispatchers and supervisors making split second decisions.
It's important to have the overall information readily accessible. It gives the officers all the information they need to make the best possible decision.
I think it's a real benefit to be able to provide information to the officers. It helps keep the officers and the citizens safe.
And anytime an officer has the ability to get to the scene quicker with more information about what is actually occurring is critical and saves people's lives.
We can now have a better understanding where people are and they give us a lot of visual information of what's going on there, if somebody is armed.
Think about how important it is to determine whether it's a Think about how important it is to determine whether it's a pencil in someone's hand, a knife or a cell phone. This is really about de-escalation at its best.
D F R uses a de-escalation tool because it gives us another resource on our pool belt before we approach calls.
The fact that we get to know in advance if a subject has a weapon, it's a great, great tool used by our agency.
The community recognizes the value of the drone as first responder program. It's a way of reimagining police response and a better way to provide service to our community. And that's really kind of the idea going forward with this technology. And this is what's going to be, uh, going forward internationally as far as law enforcement use of drones.
Drone's a first responder program is cutting edge, it's innovative, and it is the beginning of the new policing era. We are saving lives and making a difference by changing the future of law enforcement with technology.
Chula Vista has a very robust webpage on their police department, chulavista.gov. They have a lot of information on there about the history, white papers. She's presented everywhere. I was in Florida, uh, last month. They, she flew seven hours during a ten minute speech down there. Um, they, they've done a lot of the proof of concept of, of this. Here's some of their stats. These are probably maybe a month old, but they've flown nearly twenty two thousand D F R programs. Now, I will tell you, uh, currently Chula Vista is flying, uh, what's called Visual Observer, uh, Program. And Lieutenant Solis probably talked a little bit about that in a minute. Um, we, we're proposing beyond visual line of sight for a couple of reasons that he'll touch in. One is the weather. Uh, they, they don't have a problem getting police officers stand on tops of roofs in Chula Vista, California. This is the suburb of San Diego, right? Uh, the weather is so much better out there and, uh, they don't have the weather conditions, uh, nearly problems that we have. Um, but as you can see here, the top ten calls, and it might be hard to see on the screen, uh, but, uh, you know, disturbances, mental health calls, domestics, uh, are the, are the top ones. And they've actually, um, you see on the right column there, twenty one thousand calls, almost twenty two thousand probably now. Uh, they've avoided dispatching a patrol unit in almost four thousand, uh, of those or over four thousand of those calls. A couple of things just to note, we'll talk about them a little bit later. The D F R was first on scene in fifteen thousand of those calls. Their average response time be first on scene was ninety three seconds. Average response time in all calls, a hundred and thirteen seconds.
As you said, our program started in, uh, two thousand twenty or twenty twenty three. Um, we've had fifty seven, uh, call outs with our drones, uh, traffic crashes, uh, escapes, imminent, uh, imminent harm, um, special events, infrastructure, stuff like that. I averaged our, uh, re, our response time for the twenty twenty four calls and our response time, average time is thirteen minutes. Um, what our officers do right now is like this large drone is our outdoor drone. And, uh, they'll throw this in the back of their SWAT car, you know, in the case and everything. So we have to respond, drive there, take it out, get the batteries in, power it up, power up the controller. Um, I mean, our response time is, is very, very long compared to what we could have in the city of Moline.
In some instances, we're calling out Lieutenant Solis from home or somebody who's driving in to do that as well. So it's.
Yeah, correct. So our, our, um, statistics don't really, we don't have a lot of success stories. We have some, but not a lot because we're so far behind. If we're trying to find a subject who took off on foot, we're getting their thirteen minutes. They could be hiding in a garage. They could be hiding in many, many places where we wouldn't see them. So, um, that's just one of those things where we need to get that quicker response right there.
Yeah.
Um, so what we're looking for right now, the, with the D F R program is obviously rooftop deployment. Um, these drones, uh, can deploy within twenty seconds. They do their own, their check, their weather, uh, check itself, and then can go in twenty seconds. Within the city of Moline, I would say we could be on scene in ninety seconds and then the latest would be three minutes. Uh, we would probably beat SWAT cars to a majority of these, these calls and, um, provide these officers with valuable information before they even get there. Uh, we have a disturbance, someone takes off on foot. We don't even know it. When we show up, we get to a house and then we find out, oh, they left two minutes later. We have a drone in the air. We're probably going to see that before, um, the officers even arrive on scene. Um, visual observers, the, the beyond visual line of sight model, um, eliminates a need for a visual observer. Right now, our officers are part one oh seven certified. We have to keep that drone within our site at all times. Uh, so if we're downtown Moline checking and we're going up a little bit higher above the hill, we won't be able to fly with that drone, uh, out of our site. If we're in a dense area downtown Fifth Avenue, we've got to keep it in our site. So. Uh, one of the models that the companies we looked at was a visual observer model, um, which would require an officer to keep constant visual of the airspace the entire time the drone is up in the air. Uh, third shift, we have minimum number of officers, five, six, seven people. Large calls, we'd be tying up a person to monitor the airspace while the drone is in the air. So, uh, B V L O S is what they call it, uh, beyond visual line of sight. That means the drone has equipment, um, obstacle avoidance, and we don't have to watch it. So, uh, like I said, right now, we have to be able to watch it beyond the line of sight. It can be out of our, you know, vision of our naked eye. Um, the waivers are all done by the company that we choose and uh, the drones are advanced. I have advanced obstacle avoidance, which helps with, you know, seeing any obstacles in the air. A D S B is a, the model that we're looking at. A D S B is Automatic Dependent Surveillance Broadcast. All aircraft in our airspace, which is classy airspace, is required to have A D S B. So what that does is it sends a, a signal, uh, out and receives signals so that all, um, aircraft are going to know or we're going to know where they are, their altitude, their, their exact location, ground speed, and then A D S B also provides us with any weather advisories. So if you see the top diagram there, you see like the red helicopter, you see the direction it's going and it's at two hundred sixty feet high. If you look over the left side there, the blue arrow, the blue circle there, that shows you where, where the drone is, is at. And obviously we're avoiding that aircraft. Uh, the drones with A D S B will get a, um, warning message if there's an aircraft in the area. If maybe you don't see it on your map and then if it gets within a certain range, it will alert the pilots. Um, we, uh, the program, you can select location. You can click on the map where you want the drone to go. You can enter GPS coordinates or you can enter an address or business name. If you want to throw Walmart in there real quick, click on go. Twenty seconds, the drone will automatically start flying there with your pilot at the, at the desktop.
The rooftop, uh, position of, of a drone plus A D S B with A F A A waivers giving us uh, beyond visual line of sight is what we're looking at for D F R. By combining these elements, we basically can have a modern day helicopter unit without the major expenses, uh, and, and a fraction of the cost. And obviously with less manpower or training be required to handle that. Uh, we can launch from a rooftop from a web based platform to an emergency call for service, arrive in seconds, all while enhancing officer safety as well as citizen safety. Uh, Chula Vista has numerous examples of the drone saving lives. They have a couple of them on their website of a car fire and, uh, you know, disasters. As you know, they just went through wildfires and all sorts of things. Uh, the drones, uh, have been, uh, approved and concept in, in many communities, not just Chula Vista, but of course they have the most documentation. So according, according to our purchasing policy, right, we had to do quite a bit of research. So one of the, one of the problems in the drone space is there's certainly more than these four companies that we got quotes from, but these are total package companies. They do soup to nuts, everything in between. It's all in one purchase. But you can, uh, you know, uh, buy them individually, pieces of the software from one company. You certainly could buy a D G I drone, all the different things. But the, the technology space has been kind of crazy over the last year and some of these companies have been either bought out or buying each other out. So for example, Sky D L was recently purchased by Axon. You may remember Axon from being our, uh, body cameras and somewhere in one day. We have a contract with Axon. Um, Block bought out Aerodome. Um, and so it's been kind of condensed a little bit. So these are the leading total package companies. Paladin, Sky D L, Brink and Flock. Uh, we, we do have a Brink drone here, uh, Lieutenant Solis also brought. We're already, um, affiliated with Brink. We use the smaller drone, uh, for indoor flight. So we have used this drone numerous times on our SWAT call. So you remember about a year ago, I was in front of you to get approval to purchase, um, our, our Bearcat. And so our SWAT team goes there on one of these high risk, um, uh, callouts that might have a firearm that's involved in, in that. Instead of just charging in there, which what, what we did thirty years ago, twenty five years ago, charging in there, we're doing different things. And one of the different things is to send a drone in, right, to try to, uh, get a lay of the, the inside, try to figure out where the individuals at, maybe communicate, try to get them out, different things like that. There's several success stories of, of the, uh, indoor drone being, uh, de-escalator or saving a use of force incident, in my opinion, as, as the, you know, risk manager for the department. Um, so we looked at, uh, all these companies. We've done either in-person demos, uh, uh, I think Block maybe we did, uh, virtual, but Paladin, uh, was one of them we got quotes from. So we're looking at primarily a two drone package, uh, two rooftop docks. And the docks are like Venus flytraps. The drone sits inside of it and, and they're, uh, encased inside of it. And when it needs to be deployed, the, the top shell, uh, comes off and the drone leaves from there. Um, and so we're looking at two of those. So trying to make these, um, equivalent packages to look at was a little challenging. Paladin was three twenty eight for five years, Sky D L three eighteen for five years. Brink and Flock gave us one drone package. And of course they have these other options, they call them hives and stuff like that, where, yeah, you can add them on. But really the three and four became cost prohibitive. Um, and so we really focused on Paladin and Sky D L. And I also give Lieutenant Solis a lot of credit here. The, the dollar figures that you see up there today over the, how long have you been working on this? Four months, four or five months? Uh, were probably a good hundred thousand dollars higher than we got to, uh, all the way up until, well, I had to come into Bob's office on Monday and say, hey, I gotta pivot a little bit because we got a deal. Um, and so, um, you know, the, 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 the packages, we, we originally were looking at Paladin for three years. But then if you start breaking them down per year, um, you'll, you'll see that Sky D L, uh, is financially, uh, the, the best cost uh, that we, that we have here. And, uh, we, we feel that, I'll explain to you in a minute, the Sky D L has some superior, uh, features to it.
Sky D L, um, one, it's an American made drone. Uh, if anybody knows anything about drone stuff, they are, there's talk about D J I being, or any Chinese products, uh, being banned. So I don't know where that's going. Nobody really knows just yet. Uh, so Sky D L being a, a U S manufactured drone is, is a major bonus here. Um, Sky D L has a deep integration with our Axon system, our body cameras. Um, everything that we're using right now, Sky D L will feed into that and pull from it as well. Um, our officer location can be found on a screen or on, on the screen, the body cam, their SWAT cars. So that's a huge, huge plus there as well. Um, there's a parachute attachment coming out, uh, for, for Sky D L. It's going to be out. They're working on it. I just talked to the guy yesterday, three, four months. He thinks that they're going to be finalized with it. They're doing testing with it now. Um, Paladin has a five G network, uh, Sky D L has five G and a mesh backup. So if the five G connection is low in an area, it'll automatically switch over to this, this mesh connection. So us having a second location, the one location that's above the hill, one location at the police department will help us with that connectivity and never have any, you shouldn't have any issues there. Um, Sky D L drones have red and blue lights, both easily identifiable. We don't want people to wonder, is that a police drone? We want them to know that's the police. Uh, so it has red and blue lights built in there. And like we talked about, the A D S B built in for, uh, locating other aircraft in our area and, uh, the beyond visual line of sight. With Paladin, we'd have to go with the visual observer model, tie up an officer, uh, to watch the airspace. It's D G I drones. They have a drone that they could provide if, uh, the ban takes, uh, takes place. But we don't know how, what quality that is. Um, so Paladin was a, a real, real close, uh, choice here. Uh, but with everything that Sky D L has to add or has to offer, uh, that's going to be the route that, that we're going to recommend here.
David, could you play that video then? So this is, uh, our recommendation for Sky D L and this is one of their videos.
Sky D L dock for X ten. Station docked X tens where critical work happens. Get airborne in twenty seconds. Operate remotely from anywhere in the world and get the data you need to act. For public safety agencies, Sky D L D F R command is the ultimate software suite for drone operations. Respond to incidents with a single click. Share live video with Readylink. And use augmented reality overlays for precise visual orientation. Manage your fleet, upload evidence and build community trust. It's all at your command.
To be able to preposition drones on top of our police stations and those drones being able to remotely deploy and operate beyond visual line of sight for drone operations is the game changer.
We want drones and docks all over the city of Oklahoma that can respond to a call, can respond to an officer and give them eyes in the sky before they even arrive on scene. Seeing what the dock for X ten can do up here, I think we're one step closer to making that a reality.
You can say, hey, I'm done. You can, we're turning home with a, with a light on there. With Sky D L, we've had an incredible opportunity for us to be the new docs in action and be able to work hand in hand with the engineers to understand why we do things certain ways so they can better understand our problems and how to solve them.
Sky D L X ten dock is definitely the future for drone from all respected. Sky D L was able to deliver on that technology.
They have two of them up here being launched remotely and it's working. Now there's over forty mile per hour wind, it's over a hundred degrees, and it's been able to work in situations where we never dreamed of being able to use a drone.
So I mentioned to you early on, uh, you know, Chula Vista, proof of concept of the D F R. There are several other communities, uh, that have, uh, Sky D L or docks. They're launching from docks, Paladin, Sky D L, Flock, uh, these other ones. And you saw a couple of them over almost city, uh, Las Vegas. Um, and so they, the, the concept is, is proven, uh, by already existing customers.
It's like I said, Sky D L is U S manufacturer. They were founded in twenty fourteen and they made consumer drones and drones for, um, the military up until twenty nineteen. And then twenty nineteen, they stopped making consumer drones. And, uh, it's probably about twenty nineteen when I started looking into drones and trying to see how it could benefit our department. And in the stuff I was looking at back then, Sky D L, and they still are, the best drone with obstacle avoidance. Uh, I saw it in action, uh, February, went up to see the drone, fly it, and, uh, they flew towards a tree that has no leaves on it. A D G I drone, I can tell you this from experience, would hit a branch and, and crash. The Sky D L drone noticed the tree, observed it and flew right around it. Um, it is the best obstacle avoidance, uh, detection around. Um, so obviously it's got a lot of customers, a lot of drones shipped out. Uh, right now they're, this new doc, they're looking at a couple of months lead time before they can get those out. They've got so many, like, orders for those. So the program, uh, like, like it showed in there, they can be flown in extreme weather conditions, uh, day or night. And the, the, they say thirty five miles per hour, I think on the, the wind. But I've seen, I follow them on LinkedIn and I see all these videos. They keep up in it, trying to see how high the, the drone will operate. And it's forty plus miles per hour, which we know we experienced that here. Uh, these drones have an add-on. They have a speaker attachment, a spotlight, and like I said, the parachute attachment. Uh, the spotlight can be used to help officers locate, you know, if they're on the ground and see exactly where they need to go. And then the speaker for out looking for missing people to communicate with them. You know, hey, looking for, you know, whatever so and so, uh, call for them and hopefully get them to come out in case we haven't found them just yet. Uh, thermal cameras, zoom cameras, and, um, these things are paramount in us locating people in need. Uh, like we already talked about the red, blue lights. Uh, right here, this map on the right has a three mile radius from the Moline Police Department. Uh, that's your average, um, space that you will be able to fly a drone. It's only because of battery life. They could fly much farther, but you've got to be able to go out and then come back. Uh, so the Sky D L X ten drones, their newest drone, it's just for, uh, law enforcement and, uh, enterprise type use. Has a forty minute flight time. The battery can charge from fifteen to ninety five percent in twenty seven minutes. Can fly up to forty five miles per hour. Like I said, withstand, uh, wind speeds thirty five to forty, operate in extreme temperatures. It's I P fifty five weather resistance. Uh, this is flashes of rain or water from, uh, multiple directions, but they have flown this thing in driving rain and it works perfectly. And it works perfectly. Uh, zoom lens, you can see a license plate or a sign from eight hundred feet. And that's a three-hundred-sixty degree obstacle avoidance. The drone has a night sense technology, where all these drones have sensors around them, I mean, I guess your cheaper ones don't have it everywhere. Uh, but the DJI drones, to fly that at night in close quarters, uh, you're not gonna have the ability to do it. It's, we've flown them, we use it for traffic reconstruction, typically these are at night, they can be in smaller areas. We have to be very careful when we fly that drone. Uh, this drone with a night sense can fly perfectly. Uh, it is, you know, those uh, conditions. So we have our, our grid map here showing their flight heights, restrictions here in Moline. As you can see in the red box down at the bottom there, you've got your zeros because you're close to the airport. And then as you get away from the airport, you get higher. Uh, so fifty feet on up to two hundred feet. Um, what Skydio will do is they will communicate with the FAA, get all the waivers, uh, ACOA, uh, beyond visual line of sight. And allow us to fly in the zero grids. And then also be able to raise our heights where we can fly, say John D. Rowe, beat up to two hundred feet rather than, than fifty feet.
So you might ask, you know, why is it better to fly it higher? The higher that we can get, the less disruptive it is to the public, right? They just, they're not bothered by, yeah, you get the eight hundred feet, no one even knows that, that they're there. So we, you know, we wanna fly at a higher al- altitude, but obviously because of the airport, we have a little issue, so we don't think we're gonna, we're not gonna get that high. Uh, but we're, we're pretty confident we'll be able to get some of these grids for law enforcement raised.
Um, so a lot of the stuff that we do, we've got, I've seen a lot of videos I could have, you know, we could have put in here and shown you all the success stories. Um, but our body cameras record information and you can look at that after the fact and. You know, it helps the officers or it's good training tools. These drones can help them make the right decisions while they're out on the street. So like in this, this situation here, they're looking around, the subject's behind the corner. Well, the drone can tell them, hey, don't go yet, or you know, he's looking at you or cannot, he's looking away. Give them valuable information to, one, keep them safe and keep that person safe, maybe we can de-escalate the situation without using force. If we don't have the drone in the air, they go around that corner and then obviously bad situations can happen. Um, so here's an example of uh, one of our drone successes that we've had. Devon Court had a shooting, uh, suspects fled the vehicle, fled into Moline, they crashed, uh, took off on foot. Uh, Officer Hooveroff is operating the drone and found the subject hiding behind a fence. Uh, which the officer's on foot, who knows what they're gonna find here. So he jumps the fence and watch right here, you can see the little dot there, still something fell off his clothing, if it had been a gun. We would have noticed that and could have went back and found that gun.
So this is thermal, you're seeing the heat signature of it. The rabbits.
Rabbits running.
This is high enough, he probably doesn't even know it's there. Um, he might have, well, he had, he hit the spotlight, so he saw it, but this drone is very loud.
Now we got officers chasing him.
Yeah, so we have our officers chasing him. And you see, he kinda stopped there for a second or turned and then kept going. Ready to retire, yeah.
How's the communication? Is somebody behind the keyboard saying, go around this way, like, how's that?
Correct. So like in this si- uh, situation, we don't have house numbers. On these new programs, we'd be able to tell them like, hey, he's running by, you know, eight eighteen, or you know, obviously we use north-south pretty well. Um, you know, he's running north towards the river, he's doing this. Um, officer, whoever's flying the drone, operating the drone, we'll be able to talk to them, hey, he's doing this, this is where it's going, he just stops. You know, hold your position. Uh, when we have situations like this, we keep the air clear. So obviously people aren't going out and talking and saying other things on the radio. It's for emergency purposes, it's only gonna be for communication between the drone and, and these, you know, guys chasing him.
So Eli mentioned uh, a concept called augmented reality, right? So, so this is real, real what he's seeing in the camera. And the products that both Paladin and uh, on Skydio, but particularly Skydio. Uh, overlays, maps on top of that. So that he would know exactly what street there are, where the, where north is oriented, house numbers and things like that, so it integrates the two. Well, augmented reality.
We had a subject who had done a shooting in Rock Island earlier, earlier in the day, we found him in Moline. Fled, he was just on the border of Moline and Rock Island, in Rock Island. And I know the area pretty well, uh, but me trying to tell officers where to go. I was, I was struggling because I don't have any addresses, I didn't have landmarks, I couldn't tell people, I didn't know which avenue it was. Uh, so the, the overlays are gonna be huge for, for that, in order to direct.
That's, you know, so it's been here twenty-four years and, you know, it's different when you're on the ground, when you're in the air. It's, it's there, oh.
Yep. So like I said, you know, this can help our, not only our officers, but our fire department and their response. Um, there is a fire up by um, Y East, Forty-first Street, Twenty-sixth Avenue, that spread from a mattress to a dumpster. To a carport, to an apartment. I tried to grab the drone and drive up there, but by the time I got there, they were already, you know, they, they had things under control. Uh, but had I'd been able to fly this from a, you know, location, get it there, they're gonna be able to see that. We can send a message out to um, anybody that we want to, we get an interphone number, preset numbers, preset lists. To send it out to Fire Command, they can pull up on their cell phone, on their computer and coordinate. Their, their response, where people need to go, engine twelve, you go here, engine, you know, fourteen, you do, you know, you do this. Um, and then also it helps us with, obviously with our officers as well. The blue, the blue uh, line there is officer locations based off their body camera. Uh, we've had officers who get into a chaotic situation, they call out the wrong location. Officer did this a few months ago, called out, I think Seventh Street, Nineteenth Avenue, but he was really at. Hen Street or something, officers were going the wrong direction, chasing people, guy had a gun. If we had put the drone up, we'd have seen, ah, he's over here, not over where he said he was at.
And that is only available in Skydio, because Skydio is an Axon company, right? So I brought the fire chief up here to explain this fire.
So, yeah, back in June twenty-three, um, this was the fire that was down on, you know, twenty-sixth hundred block, Fourth Avenue. So this was the propane uh, storage facility. That uh, our incident commanders, uh, we decided to go defensive on this and. A lot of times in the fire service, a defensive fire will call it just to surround and drown. We just surround the entire building with as many vehicles and as many hoses as we can. We'll put up some aerial devices and we'll just flood it with water until that fire goes out. I remember telling Chief Gault when he got on scene to uh, kinda assist with this, we're probably gonna be here twelve, thirteen, fourteen hours. Uh, it was propane-fed, um, we can't see into the building. So we have no idea where the actual fire is being fed from, so we're just going to surround and drown it until it goes out. With the use of the uh, the drone, we were able to get above it. The images were, were sent to our units, all the, all the incident commanders, the. Um, aerial units, and we were able to see exactly where that fire was being fed from. We were able to relocate our vehicles and uh, hit that fire with water directly and we got that fire out in about two hours. The thermal imager goes right through the smoke and helps them get where they need to. And I think there's also on this wall here on the left side was more propane that hadn't. Fire, correct, and we could see that and they concentrated some fire, some water on that wall to keep that cool. To prevent those from going up as well. And then along with um, everything that Skydio has to offer is they have a transparency dashboard. So I really like this because I know the public, you know, or everybody has their opinions on drones, they're afraid of being watched, however we're using it. Um, trans- transparency dashboard uh, lists our flights, what the reason is, uh, you know, type of call, if an arrest was made. Um, it just shows them where we're going, everything that we're doing with our drone. Obviously, we can hold some stuff back if we are using it for um, some type of surveillance. That surveillance would only be utilized with the search warrants to date, we haven't used that. Um, but this shows everyone where the drone's at, what we're using it for, where it went. Um, it just really helps out the, with the public to, to see how we're using it and see some of our success stories.
That's after the fact or live?
After the fact.
Yeah, so um, so our recommendation uh, is to move forward with uh, Skydio, getting an Axon own, uh, company. So our recommendation is to move forward with the quote that they provided us, you'll see that. Uh, if you give us a thumbs up today, you'll see that on the council agenda next week. Uh, the package for Skydio is about three nine, three hundred nineteen thousand. Uh, we would need about ten thousand dollars per site for electrical and internet to be run, it's pretty simple. And uh, we've had uh, our facilities do some um, structural uh. Engineering work on the roofs, just to make sure, it's about two hundred and fifty pounds, not, not a huge load, but just if they could tolerate it. Um, we, we are in negotiations with another site uh, on the other side of town. On a non-government building that we, we would look at for a second site, you may, like, why do two? Uh, for a couple of reasons, if you go back and look at uh, the battery life of these, it's pretty short. Uh, and if you know anything about technology, uh, these phones that, that you have in your pocket are more powerful than the phone, that they use that you have on your desktop. But they don't have the batteries, right, that would fit in your pocket, right, to keep them, the power, they're actually being limited by the batteries and that's the drone's problem. As well is, is the battery life, so you know, they gotta fly back. So we'll still keep these, we'll still use these, so for example, we're not gonna be able to keep that drone up for uh, you know, two hours on a fire. That, that drone's gonna get dispatched, it's gonna give that initial response, it's gonna be able to stay up there for. Uh, you know, depending on the weather conditions, thirty minutes, thirty minutes. Uh, another officer or Lieutenant Solis is gonna arrive. What, with another drone in the back of their car and launch that one as that, when they goes home and recharges. Well meanwhile now, everything's dead, well the city doesn't stop, right? We have another emergency call or a missing person or whatever, we have another one that's charged and ready to go. And then, and could go out if needed, while that one takes uh, what was it, about twenty-five, thirty minutes of charge, you know? Um, and so I think it's advantageous for, for that, uh, to be able to uh, to have two and the price point isn't, isn't significantly different. I mean, it is different, but I mean, uh, it's, it's, it's within our cost tolerance, I think. Um, so I'll take any questions you have, that's the end of the presentation. Uh, we, we're recommending uh, uh, that to move forward at about three hundred, one authorization spent three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Contracts for five years, um, so it's kind of, we're done for a big chunk of time here, not to worry about budgeting it. Uh, and I think at that point then, five years down, what do you think about what drones and technology was five years away, years ago? The, the cost is gonna be probably way down. Uh, and the technology will be way different, we'll be, we'll be going with something in a different direction at that point. And so I think it's a good period, we, I actually had a call today with a pretty high rank for some Axons. Told me that they are, they have no, no plans to change anything with Skydio over the next five years. And when I was in, in um, Utah, they're literally paying for ten years. Uh, five years is already in their, in their bank and they're looking at ten years now. Take any questions, go ahead.
How, how much of it is being actually flown by the human that's there at the controls versus? Automatic, I mean, we talked about some things where it's, it's swerving around trees, maybe that, that of accident avoidance. What, but there's, there's always a pilot, right?
Correct. There's always a pilot, the initial launch, uh, let's, let's say we had to send it to Walmart, you click, go Walmart. It'll fly there, um, one thing we didn't mention is the camera's always pointed at the horizon as we're flying. It's not looking down and it's not recording until we s- we click for it to record. Uh, but the pilot is there, will always be there, it's not just gonna go on its own and then, you know, no one's gonna have control of it. It'll initially start going that way, if we're, it's got a large building or an obstacle, it'll just go right around it to get to Walmart. And then the pilot can take over at any point in time to fly that drone. It's just probably more, you know, a better route to go, just let the, the drone fly there, there automatically. Uh, but there will always be a pilot there, then after they get on scene or close to on scene, the pilot will take over, control the camera and start calling out information that they need.
Technology is similar to cars, they have lane, lane assist and things like that.
And that pilot is always a sworn officer?
Yes, sir.
And, and Chief will know, I'm asking for all the concerns about privacy and those sorts of things. A sworn officer makes that a much less of a concern.
I don't know that I wanna commit to only a sworn officer. Uh, but we, we have maybe uh, an opportunity to have dispatchers also involved. Uh, in that, uh, we haven't, we've had discussions with QCOM about it. But that might be a force multiplier for us, so at least to do the initial launch, it's still our uh, our data, right? It's, you know, we already have policies that cover all of this, so the questions you have about all, uh, about. Uh, privacy retention and all that is no different on a DFR flown one or. Um, our drones that are, that are launched out of the back of squad yard, all those policies are already in place.
Well, yeah, and then we have others that.
As we're thinking about that, this, and, and a QCOM employee, a dispatcher certainly is a category. Right, okay. Under current policy, is that always a sworn officer or what's?
Yeah, well, right.
So we have to adjust it to include those dispatches.
Correct, correct.
And if we go down that path, we have that opportunity to review and say, hey, what's safeguarding process is. I would wanna just look at that and ensure, but I think dispatchers are likely good. They have access to a lot of information.
They have, they have access to probably more than, than the officer does right on scene. Uh, they have a lot of, obviously background checks and everything like that on their policies, to hold them accountable, all those things. And I don't know that necessarily we're committed to that yet, for right now, the only, not even every law enforcement officer in the police department is flying, I, I'm not flying.
How many drone pilots are there today?
We currently have seven and we're training six more, and we're gonna have one more address, so we'll have fourteen here in the next couple of months.
So they have to, currently, under this form, the form that we're in now, they have to have Part One-O-seven FAA's license. Uh, there is a, a new FAA program coming out where we can get an agency license. Called a COA, and then we can train people under that, the Part One-O-seven people can train people that are not Part One-O-seven. Um, so we might be able to expand it in our own law enforcement without the, without going all the way through the Part One-O-seven exam. But that's deep in the weeds for it.
I have a couple of questions, so I can do a few at a time. Uh, rapid-fire obstacle avoidance that includes power lines?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Um, mesh network, uh, in case we lose cell coverage, is that line of sight? It, it's probably directional satellite or microwave or something. So, uh, obviously the more the merrier if we could ever, you know, get more than two.
Then you have extra, you could purchase extra hours or, not towers, I don't know what they're gonna be called, like holes. With their mesh signals on there if you wanna put them places.
I, I, the worst-case scenario, the Duracho a few years back knocked out power, which knocked out cell towers. Which knocked out the internet for my house, but I still had power, so that was really fun. Um, what do we do in that situation? Is there a non-internet optionality?
Well, the one, the first thing I'll say is it, uh, particularly with cell. Is it may have been knocked out for you, but law enforcement has uh, FirstNet on AT&amp;T or this is T-Mobile. So it's uh, what is it, T priority, I think, for law enforcement, so even though the bandwidth might be down for citizens. Uh, unless it's completely like, like, like a tornado wipes it out, then we're probably not flying, right? Uh, probably not flying at all. Uh, in that, in some cases, we have the ability to get what's called a cult. Which they can bring in to, to reactivate cell coverage for law enforcement. And maybe we could get back up and running if a tornado wiped us out. But I, you're talking about like if it goes down like mid-flight, um, I think it's probably pretty. Unlikely with uh, our FirstNet priority.
Well, I, I think, let's talk about a tornado, that's when we want these things up.
Yes.
For first responding situations. For me, I didn't just lose cell, I also lost home internet.
Yeah.
And that's just because all of the. It's a consequence of.
Well, you wanna be transparent, like if all that stuff was down, it's not flying.
Okay, which, you know, we don't have it now, so.
Now, that doesn't mean that I'd not be able to fly this.
Right.
This one, right?
That's, we have to go back to where we're at right now.
Okay, and that's not internet reliant? All right, cool.
And also, if it does lose signal, just for, you know, ease your mind, it, the drone will go right back to the dock.
Okay.
It loses signal, it knows where the dock is, that's its home, it flies right to the dock.
Anybody got a, a Roomba vacuum?
Same concept.
Just, two quick ones, um, batteries go bad sometimes, so obviously they'd be able to replace the unit. Unless the battery itself is.
Detached.
Okay, um, great, cause batteries can get better too. Um, with the, or the videos automatically uploaded like the Axon body cameras are?
If we, honestly, I don't know a hundred percent on that one, I believe we can choose if they're uploaded. If they're used for evidence, um, or they would just be on an Amazon web. Uh, secure cloud server, if we choose not to, they would be retained for, you know, thirty, ninety days, whatever the retention policy would be for that.
Thank you.
All right, let's see it.
Well, Bob asked my first question, uh, my second one, um, it, it, what kind of calls would you, would just, you mentioned Walmart. Would it be for retail fare? Or at what level do we just say no?
Yeah, we're, well, well, so let's just start with. In uh, the priority for the use of the drones and what we're doing today. In, uh, the priority for the use of the drones and what we're doing today is for life safety. So we have, we have a category, we actually have forms that the officers have to file, they're online. We fill those out, that's, compiles our stats that we've already, uh, shown you today. And so like imminent risk of harm, uh, these are not going to, we don't, we don't foresee these going to every call. Disturbances, so we have, all, all these categories of calls are prioritized in the CATS, computer aided dispatch system that's at nine one one through cell. And so we would work to say, hey, which ones of these, uh, might qualify? But then we also might have a supervisor that says, hey, we got on scene to an un- un- unknown problem. And it's actually a man with a gun that fled and is now in the backyard, I need the drone. And then that drone can be dispatched to that home. So, uh, again, just to remind you, we have a supervisor, a sergeant, we hire sergeant lieutenant. That are on, on, uh, duty twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five days a year, risk management oversight. We actually see this being rolled out probably to the lieutenants first. Because not solely, but largely those are, are desk supervisors that are probably at their desk more often than not. That could operate these, uh, to assist the patrol unit. And then obviously have advanced management and supervisory training and risk management and decision-making skills.
I have questions.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Castro.
Um, and I apologize if these, um, questions have been accurate, I couldn't hear the video that, um. The video that we're playing, so it said that, I'm sorry. So this is back to the data question, I know it's on the presentations, um, that the Skydio doesn't have unlimited storage, but then the other one did. Did you know how long the, this one will keep that storage and where does, I know you kind of talked about that, but where does that live and?
Yes, so did you, so did, yes, so digital, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so digital storage and all this stuff is a, a huge problem. Uh, and it's very costly. So on our Axon contract, Axon, our hardware, our body cameras. Uh, download to unlimited storage on evidence.com, that's their, uh, data management service. Um, the, these, the drone will download to the Amazon web server, which is a government, uh, certified server platform. And then when those videos are needed to be retained for evidentiary purposes, felonies three years, misdemeanors eighteen months, other calls ninety days. Uh, they can be transferred manually by the police department into our evidence.com, uh, third-party storage. That is not unlimited, third-party, so for example, if you're a victim of a crime and you have Ring camera video and we need to get that from you. We give you a link that uploads to our third-party storage, that eats away at our third-party storage. And eventually, uh, we, we get provided discovery or whatever and, and we get it off of there. So we have to manage that third-party discovery, but in the Amazon web storage, we would, that would work, I guess it would basically be the temporary holding for it. And then of course we have evidentiary, uh, retention policies for all our body cameras, our fleet cameras, our city cameras. Uh, the drones that we have now, uh, and so forth. And there are some state statutes on what we can use and retain and must retain or cannot retain those videos for.
So, so with that being an Amazon fight, I mean, would you, just the police department be able to access that or would?
Yeah, I know it sounds weird that it says Amazon, but Am- Amazon Web Services, they, they're like a government. Uh, C G S compliant web storage platform, I don't know how else to describe it.
AWS is, is, A- AWS and Microsoft Azure are two of the huge cloud. Everything is going to go from being physical onsite anymore to buying, um, space in the web from, from one of those leaders, so.
And, and David wants us to do that and not have them, and physical servers here.
I know servers here.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think there was one more question.
Um, the. As you mentioned on the cost for that, as we said, we're coming from a grant funding, what is the available grant funding that's like currently in place?
The total dollar amount of the grant, one point five million. Finance only, it doesn't appear to be a spend down date, it's, it's our dollars, we already had it to your earmark for some other cool projects.
Can't you share some with?
Axon related, I can live translation. I was going to ask for a helicopter next week.
As we're expanding the use and availability of those drones and now. Looking at being able to operate that from the desk. Um, what does that do to force distribution of availability? I mean, how, how do we ensure we have the officers, we need to cover that, or is that just? We know there'd still be times when we'd have to be activating someone or how does that play into our overall force?
Yeah, it's a tool in the toolbox, I don't, I don't think it's something that, you know, I mean, it comes down to, we don't have anybody available, we don't have anybody available. Uh, you know, it's certainly a tool in the toolbox that we, that we feel is an enhancement. Um, but listen, as police officers, we know they, the, and, and we get this a lot, especially our younger people, like we got laptops in the cars, we've got GPS. The bottom line is, if you need to get in a car, you drive somewhere and handle a call, that's what we do.
Would, would a pilot be able to fly it to a squad car?
Yes. Web-based, oh yeah, web-based, we have tablets in the cars, they'd be able to pull that up on tablet and, and dispatch it. Uh, they can pull that tablet out of the car and do it. Um, yeah, I mean, we have a lot of options there. The question there would be, you know, what, what is the role that officer handling? You know, and, and many times, uh, I've called Lieutenant Solis at home, you know, and he's responded, you know, with those people get called in overtime. We have that all the time, SWAT callouts, detective callouts, drone callouts, you know, we need them, K nine calls, we need them, we call them and, um, and they show up.
Another point to your question though, also, if we get a call of a disturbance, you know, twenty people. That could, the drone could get on scene and see that, oh, hey, you know what? It's over, people are walking away, so we could have, you know, three officers coming from far away, the, the far east side of town. Well, now they got, they can slow down because what came out as a fight, twenty people involved is dispersed. Send, you know, just two guys, you can slow down, so that helps with, obviously keeping officers on calls if they need to be. Uh, because sometimes they'll be breaking from those calls prematurely or limits, you know, the number of people that we're sending there regardless, to keep people available for other calls. Chief, if I could further answer your question, I don't believe it was Skydio, but, uh, the first presentation that we saw, individual was flying. Yeah, from, from Chicago, he was flying a drone in Houston to a, to a site, so.
You know, and actually you standing there just reminded me, the, the fire chief and I have talked about, um, you know, getting some firefighters as well involved and trained. To be a force multiplier for certain situations where, you know, well, you know, we could use them, like, I mean, we, we collaborated on plenty of things, just like the patrolling fire. And so he has a, at least one drone operator that's certified now, that he's asked to be a part of the program that we're looking at.
As we look to expand this, I guess I would like to review as part of that review what our drone policies are currently. Um, this is for expanding use and it just, it's something I don't have a strong understanding of. Um, and like some things like, definitely don't want someone from Chicago operating our drones right now. Through or, yeah, that's a capability versus what's actually.
Right, but what, what I think you're saying is, is Lieutenant Solis is, uh, at a conference or something and we're like, you know, it's not, it's not like it would be someone that's not.
So could you communicate to people that we've, just exerted and share with us the drone policies or you can share? Mr. Timian, and then I have one thing and I'm forgetting what else.
I, I think you kind of have alluded to this, but you could activate the drone operator from their house.
Yes, yes.
And that is just a maid, they don't have to drive in, they don't have to buy a special tablet, because it's web-based. Pop on, maybe even their phone, I don't know, but at least pop on a computer.
And you're stressing Leah out here. We have some work for you to have all this say stuff.
But I guess there is that question too, can they use a personal device or should they? And P I I and everything like that.
We, we have department issues, so.
And or laptops for this reason. And that, I think that, that's great and probably solves, I, I just think of doing it from home right away is, uh, uh, another benefit to this kind of thing.
Curious, um, how many other departments do you know of in the state that are at this level with, um, forms of policing?
There, there are not many, uh, Chicago is getting one Skydio drone, uh, here very soon. Naperville is looking at getting, I don't know how many, but they're looking at, to start with Skydio. Um, there's not many in the Midwest, most of these D F Rs are on the coast. So I think that's why, uh, they're so interested in, in our area, uh, I think, I mean, I was just looking at some. Our, our prices went down as I was talking with people negotiating. Um, but they did, several of them told me, like, hey, we'd love to get, you know, we'd love to be in the Midwest, we'd love to be, you know, be the first to be in your area. Um, so it's, they're out there, there is a, there is a ton of departments, but in our area, there's, there's not a whole lot.
Aurora, you want to show Aurora, I think, to do that, Skydio demo, so there's other big agencies.
Would we charge other cities for this or would this just be?
So other. Well, we have a mutual aid agreement with the other agencies, we do not charge for police services and we, we, we don't expect to be charged either when we get assistance.
Excellent. Okay, thank you so much for all the details, we appreciate it.
Okay, move forward. Thumbs up, thumbs up to everybody.
Is there any, uh, this line is business as well?
No, there is. Oh, my ward meeting Thursday.
Oh, yeah, ward meeting Thursday.
Thursday, this Thursday.
Okay, we have no executive session, I need a motion to adjourn. And, yes, uh, roll call please.
Hi.
Was necessary, Karen? Yes.
Is that? Timian? Ben, I've seen Neil. Tango?